All right, so we do call this meeting of the Wilmington School Committee for August 19th, 2024 to order. Because we're remote, we do need to have a roll call for attendance. So I'll call you guys out as I see you. Mr. Agdil.
Here.
Mr. McCalli.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Dr. Bryson.
Here.
Mr. Golden.
Here.
And Jesse Finley is here. Tracy, Mr. Samaha is unable to join us. So, all right. With that, first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to their vote.
For which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible.
Liberty, justice for all. All right, I always find that a little awkward via Zoom, but thank you. For our consent agenda this evening, if there's no objection, I'd like to take everything at once with the exception of fiscal year 25, the carry forward warrant number four. Mr. Turner found an issue or discrepancy. So if there's no objection.
Just a small item to be reviewed.
Okay. All right. So if there's no objection, I would entertain a motion to approve everything else under the consent agenda. Uh, Dr. Bryson moves. Mr. Golden second. Questions, comments, all those in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Moving along with no objection from the committee, I'd like to move public comment to the end. Just, we have a somewhat full agenda. I want to be mindful of time and make sure we get through everything. So if you guys are okay with that, we'll take public comment at the end. Hearing no objection. That moves us into new business. First item of new business is the French Exchange Program and a plan overview for upcoming exchanges. Originally was going to be Mr. Gendron. And Mr. Pietro is back from vacation and able to join us. So welcome. Dr. Brand, if you want to start.
Sure. Thanks very much. A good evening, everyone. There is an item that accompanies this in your packet, but we thought it appropriate to bring this before the committee regarding upcoming French exchange for 2425. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Pietro. The video that was put together that hopefully you had a chance to see ahead of time speaks largely to this item, but Ms. Pietro is here to provide a little more context and if there are any questions from the committee.
Yeah, you have all the information, but in a nutshell, we're just piggybacking on a very successful Spanish exchange program that we ran last year, and we want to give our French learners an opportunity to experience something similar. So we're proposing, we're actually going to be hosting a group of 18 French students and two teachers at Wilmington High School in October. And so we're bringing to you for approval the chance for those students to participate in the reciprocal part of the program, which would be travel to France in April. And then in your packet, you have a little bit more context about our vision for trying to provide opportunities for Italian students later down the line and some virtual opportunities for those who may not be able to travel. But the French, the French travel is what we're looking to get approval for at this moment. So any questions? I'm happy to take.
Very good. Thank you. Members of the committee, questions?
Just one quick observation comment. I'm really happy to see the multiple layers you're trying to build, both the different languages, and obviously Spanish has the most students, so doing that in a second time through relatively soon, but also including Italian, also including French, and then the possibility of some virtual items, and then the possibility of some things a little bit closer. So I do appreciate the thoughtfulness behind that. And that was kind of what we were hoping was coming, was, and certainly appreciate all the time and effort that goes into organizing these. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's good feedback to hear.
Other questions, comments? Okay, with that, I would look for a motion. Dr. Bryson moves approval second. It's Mike. I saw your hand. All right. Approval moved by Dr. Bryson, seconded by Mr. McCalli. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're forward to hearing more about it. Looks like a great year.
We'll be in touch.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, moving along, the second item of new business is the appointment of the Administrator of Special Education, Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. In the packet is a memo regarding the Director of Student Support Services. As members of the committee and the community are aware, Ms. Alice Brown-Legrand recently stepped down from her position in longtime tenure in the district to assume Assistant Superintendent Position in the Lowell Public Schools where she started her career. As such, we have moved forward to appoint an interim as the Director. And I'm pleased to be able to present to you for your consideration, Ms. Christine Murray, as the interim for Director of Student Support Services. It's not unusual, at least for my approach and thinking, to move in the direction of an interim when we have such a late departure. It's not usually the time period to conduct a full-scale search. Generally speaking, the winter is a far better time to do so, hence why we're in the interim role. The reason this is before you, though, as a committee, is because you have appointing authority for a certain subset of positions in the school district. And one of those is the Administrator of Special Education, for which the Director of Student Support Services ultimately is charged to oversee. So because of that, I provide this to you for your hopeful approval of Christine Murray as the Administrator of Special Education in the district for the 2425 school year. Happy to take any questions on that if members have.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Questions, comments from the committee? Okay, I would just extend our thanks and appreciation to Alice for her years of service and to Christine for her willingness to step up. But with that, I would look for a motion to approve the appointment of Christine Murray as, what I guess, interim Director of Student Support Services. Mr. Turner moves. Is there a second? Mr. Golden, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you, Dr. Brand.
You.
And we will keep rolling right along to our old business, which is also, I think, some new information, but the Wildwood MSBA update. So Glenn, I'll let you start.
Absolutely. Thanks again. We do have a, really the bulk of the meeting, as you know, this evening. There's a number of different parts, if you will, to this part of the meeting, the MSBA project update. We're going to start, if we may, with our, members of our design team from Doran Woodier. They're here this evening to provide an update to the school committee. They've also been doing the same way this evening with Select Board. They've had the opportunity to provide an update to the school building committee as well, but we think it's also important for this update to be delivered to you tonight. Following their presentation and the chance for you to certainly ask any questions of them, there are a couple of other things that we wish to share, an update on our education program plan, grade level configuration, reconfiguration, and then I have a brief presentation around a rapid initiation on the project. But if we can go in that order, I'd like to ask Lee or Ronnie if you can share your screen. You should be able to. Perfect, Ron. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. So thanks for having us. We wanted to give you an update here where the project stands as we have a couple of meetings and upcoming votes ahead of us this week. Right now, I'll just run through this agenda here. You know, we'll just quickly go through the introductions, the MSBA process, a summary of our previous phase preliminary design program, and then give you an update of where we are today with the preferred schematic phase, and then also include some information on community outreach efforts and staying connected to the project for those in the community. So the town of Wilmington and the school committee partnered with MSBA to pursue a project centered around the Wildwood School. The building committee was formed and proceeded to procure the rest of the project team, which is your owner's project manager, SMA, and then the designers, Lee and myself here with Doran Woodier Architects. So MSBA is a pretty defined program, you know, started back when there were six elementary schools, all of similar vintage in Wilmington. And, you know, they were experiencing space deficiencies, educational deficiencies for program areas, and also the infrastructure. Definitely some significant need for upgrades with HVAC, plumbing, electrical, windows, envelopes. And some of these projects were slowly happening around the district. But definitely overall, there was quite the need of upgrades as part of this. Look at the current existing conditions. Wildwood at the time was determined to be the most in need, and so was submitted to the MSBA. And with the acceptance of Wildwood, the MSBA did approve that additional enrollments could be studied as part of this project. And so the Wildwood School was one option in great configuration with 130 kindergarten students plus the pre-K students. There was an option to study the Wildwood with the Woburn Street Schools, which would include 510 K to five students plus, sorry, K to three students with pre-K students. And then Wildwood, Woburn Street, and North Intermediate, which would total a 755 pre-K to five students. And that would also add the pre-K students into that, onto the 755. For the purposes of the study and of the information, we have accounted for approximately 100 pre-K students. So of all these three numbers that you see, when we're doing our programming, we add about 100 pre-K students to the number. MSBA has a pretty, you know, defined process, and they break it down into eight modules, as you can see on the screen. The first step was back in April of 2021 when Wildwood was invited to participate in the MSBA program. And we are currently in the feasibility study phase, which started a little over a year ago, back in April of 2023. And the feasibility study phase is split into two phases, actually. The first part is the preliminary design program, which started back in April and then continued on for about a year. We submitted that information to MSBA in April of 2024, and that included facility review of the existing conditions, educational analysis and defining of a vision, and then developing eight potential options, sorry, 18 potential options. Then we moved into the preferred schematic phase, which is where we are right now, and that was taking a short list of the 18 options and eventually defining that into one preferred option. That one preferred option would then move into module four, which is the schematic design phase. And that's where we would study the one option in greater detail to develop a detailed cost estimate. And that, at that time, is when the community of Wilmington has the opportunity to partner with the MSBA with a defined number to move forward to a project. So the first phase was that preferred schematic, we referred, or preliminary design, and we refer to that as the PDP. So you often hear a lot of acronyms that we use. The preliminary design program is the first phase. And as I indicated earlier, it looks at the existing conditions of the building. So we visited all three of the sending schools here, Wildwood, Woburn, and North with our engineering teams. We looked at the vintage of the building and the existing conditions and all of the systems. And this is a snapshot of the conditions. Overall, the three buildings had similar scores, being that they were of similar vintage. The North Intermediate has had the most improvements with their windows and roof and a couple of other things, and so it scored slightly higher than the other two schools. So in summary, you know, there were concerns that would need to be addressed as part of any large project. And, but overall, there were deficiencies and facility needs throughout. The next part of the PDP phase was defining the project needs, and we had a series of visioning sessions, eight to be the exact number, and it included over 50 participants. This was community members, district administrators, staff, representatives of the town, seniors, parents, students. You know, we took all of the information, shared. It was a lot of working sessions. Some were remote, some were online, in a hybrid format. And then we had the last two sessions were in-person, and they were more workshops where we developed, you know, ideas of what we wanted to see in a future project and vision for the upcoming project. Out of that, we developed a summary of spaces that we proposed for the project, and that would meet both the building and the educational needs for each of the enrollments that were studied. As you can see here, there were 15 alternatives that were developed at four sites. And then in addition to the 15 options, there would be three repair-only alternatives for a total of 18 option study. The repair-only alternatives looked at extending the life of the building, but it does not include any educational improvements that would involve adding additional space to any of the buildings. Typically, with the repair-only alternatives, they can be spaced out over years and years. However, it's for the purposes of this project and to be able to use it as a comparison with the work that we were doing, we had to look at it as if all the work would be done in one project, and therefore it would trigger code requirements. And so as part of our recommendations, we had to include system upgrades that would be triggered by codes. So for example, the fire suppression system, you know, structural seismic upgrades would be code triggers. And so we would include that in any of the numbers for a repair-only project. So the 18 options that were reviewed had to somehow be shortlisted, and so there was a valuation matrix that was developed. There was eight categories that you see on the screen here, and within these categories, there were several criteria, and they were used to score the options. A summary of those scorings for the pre-KK options, we had four different options. And in each of the grade configurations, we would have at least one repair-only, one addition of renovation, and one new project at minimum for each of the grade configurations. So you'll see here for pre-KK, we had four options, the different scorings, and the repair-only would move forward as it's definitely a requirement by the MSBA. And then the new school at the Wildwood site was the highest scoring, and so that carried forward. For the pre-K three options, there were six options, and the repair-only, although it does not include the pre-KK population, it was carried forward for cost comparison purposes. And then a new school at Woburn was the highest scoring of the pre-K three options. The pre-K five had eight options, and here again, the repair-only option at North Intermediate is carried, even though it does not include the pre-K to three population for cost comparison purposes. The new school at North was the preferred of the new options. And then because one add-reno option had to be carried forward as well, the pre-K five add-reno option was the highest scoring of all of the add-reno options, and so that was the one selected to move forward. So in the end, we had seven options that were shortlisted by the building committee, and then that was what was submitted to the MSBA in April. And this is just the summary of that. You know, we went through the three design enrollments, some of the programmatic services that were considered included, potential for extending pre-K and then adding of the STEM program. You'll see the square footages of the three potential buildings that would fit the population in question. There were eight alternatives that were explored, of which five were chosen for further development, plus the two base repairs for cost comparison. And those cost ranges for the shortlist ranged from 26 million to 215 million. So we submitted the preliminary design program to the MSBA, and then they take time to review that program. And we had the seven alternatives, and then you'll see two additional alternatives that were added. The MSBA asked that we carry the pre-KK add-reno and the pre-K three add-reno for cost comparison purposes as we move forward through this current phase of preferred schematic. So in total, we have nine options that move forward. So then we worked in this current phase to refine the shortlisted options. And, you know, we've tried to see how we could improve on each of the options, and if we were accomplishing the goals that were set out and what we could do better. And in that process, we were actually able to reduce the square footage slightly for each of the options. So in the previous phase, for example, with pre-KK, you see that we're at almost 67,000 per feet, and we reduced it to down to almost 65,000 per feet. This had to do with the adjustments to the pre-K classroom count, as well as some efficiencies that were noted in the music and art programs. This is the pre-K five new building at North Intermediate. It would be located behind the existing building. In the preferred schematic phase, one of the biggest changes we saw was that we were able to completely separate the vehicle and bus traffic. In general, the building is divided on the more eastern side with the public spaces, and then the wings have the classroom, which we consider the more private spaces. And we tried to do that with safety in mind. We also looked to refine the plan based on code, you know, travel distances and things like that to exit the building. All of the pre-K five options also include the 12,000 square foot gymnasium, which is a larger gymnasium that MSBA would provide. They typically would provide a 6,000 square foot gymnasium for pre-K five. The North site also has access to municipal utilities, which makes it a more favorable site than some of the others. And then an advantage of the location of this new building would be that it is set behind the existing building, allowing the existing building to stay operational while construction was occurring. Also, in this phase, we created circulation drawings for each of the options. I'm sharing the pre-K five just as an example here, where you can see that the bus circulation for drop-off would go behind the building. They would actually use a turnaround, and then they would be able to drop students off and then return and exit out directly out to Ballardville. Parent vehicles, and they would enter in here, and they would go around the circulation loop, be able to drop off and then exit out. And then those that have pre-K or special services would enter in, and they would be able to have, there's some limited parking here for being able to park and drop off pre-K students, or if there were services that were being received, they could also use that. There is an emergency access route around the entire building. We did meet with police and fire departments at the beginning of this phase as well to review the plans and get feedback. And one of the pieces of feedback that they provided was that they wanted to have access from Arlene Street, so this would be for emergency access only, but it would provide access to the back of the building areas quickly. There are several playground spaces as well that I'll note, that there's playground spaces that have open space. The older grades would have a playground space along this edge here, and there would be some people's courts also located on-site, and then some green space with parking here. The advantage of locating the fields in this space is that there is a pedestrian path, so they would never have to cross traffic to be able to access the green space. Oh, and one other thing, sorry, to also include here is one of the things we look at as part of any of our site designs is including a lot of queuing space on-site to take the traffic off of the main arteries. And during pickup, for example, this option allows for an alternate pickup scenario where vehicles could actually use what was the bus loop during drop-off to allow for additional queue length, and then the buses could use the front loop. So everything has been sized so that they can alternate if desired. This is the pre-K five add-reno. This includes a four-story building for the classroom wings, and also includes the larger 12,000 square foot gymnasium. There would be significant disruption with construction because it is with an occupied school, and so it would be phased over time. But once completed, you know, pre-K to three students would move into the building. This is a pre-K three new option. This is a two-story building located just north of the existing building on Woburn Street. From High Street, the building would appear to be one story, but then the wings behind are actually two-story wings. The pre-K and K would be at the lower level, so they would be able to exit directly to grade due to the grade changes on this site. The pre-K three options have a 6,000 square foot gymnasium, and the one big difference with this site from North is that this site requires significant retaining walls to accommodate the circulation in the field area. So the retaining walls are noted by these dark black lines that you'll see along here. The other thing to note is that the, one of the classroom wings would actually overhang the circulation route. And so the buses that would be traveling behind the building along the bus route would actually travel underneath that wing, but it does also give opportunity for covered play area. The site is connected to Town Water, but it also is on Septic, so that would be a consideration. And construction would be somewhat disruptive on this site just because the location of the building impacts the existing circulation. And so we would have to complete some of the site work early on in order to allow for temporary parking during construction. This is the add-renovation option for pre-K three at the Woburn Street site. We would look at building the classroom wings and the new gymnasium space behind the existing building, and then renovating the existing building once those students from grades one, two, and three occupy the new additions. Again, here, you know, grade changes, so there is a need for the retaining walls, but there would be quite a bit of disruption to accomplish this option as well. For pre-KK, we had a significant change, I would say, on the floor plan. The previous plan in the PDP phase, we did not have separation of public and private, being the pre-KK. But with this phase, we were able to work on the site plan and the floor plan layouts to provide a separation of the public and private zones. So here are the more public spaces. So here are the more public spaces and then the classroom spaces were further behind. So it would allow for lockdown of the public spaces if the building were in use by the community. And the site is unoccupied, so there would be no phasing required. There are definitely some retaining walls to accomplish some of the site work here, especially with the septic system, which you can see again here with the dark black lines around the site. Traffic would enter in off of Wildwood Street and we do have a separate loop here for the pre K. We have a parent loop here that would come in and exit and then around the building would be the bus loop. But their entry and exit points are all shared. And the site is significantly smaller than the other two sites. This is the add renovation option. This would include classroom wings being built. The larger gymnasium would be at the back of the building and then you would have your administration and other public spaces in the front of the building. So this one does not necessarily accomplish a real separation of public and private, but this is a pre K K building, so it is a smaller population. But again, this is a, no phasing is required for this site being that it is unoccupied. So when we looked at the evaluation process for the shortlisted options, we used the same evaluation matrix and criteria for consistency from the previous phase. And all of the options were scored. What we found was that many of the scores actually were similar. Some were slightly adjusted based on revised layouts and site developments in the PSR phase. The highest scoring was still the pre K five new at north. It was followed by the pre K five add Reno and then the pre K three new at Woburn Street. So then we looked at estimating the shortlisted options. And things to keep in mind are that these options are relative costs between each other and their order of magnitude. So, you know, not an exact cost analysis or determination of the final cost, but it's to give us an idea of what these would cost. And then since the first estimate, some costs have gone up and others have gone down. So what has changed between the estimates? As indicated, overall program square footage was reduced. That's one of the largest driving factors of cost. And then site cost, we had a little bit more information that was developed and understood at this phase. And so we were able to price the site not just based on a cost per square foot, but actual site features. And then the soft costs are relative costs that adjust based on all of the other costs. So here we have the updated costs for preferred schematic. And as indicated, they have gone, some have gone up and some have gone down. The pre K K and pre K three options either increased or decreased. It was about by three to six percent. The pre K five options had a little bit more significant decrease of about eight percent. And one example of that is that the north site doesn't have all of the significant grade changes and the need for the retaining walls. So that was part of that cost difference in site. So how did these costs compare? We wanted to give you an idea of, you know, the most recent school project for Wilmington, which was the high school in June of 2013, that came in at a cost of $352 a square foot. And then high schools now are coming in at quite a different range between 600s and 800s typically, a couple higher and lower. And a lot of this has to do with, you know, obviously everyone understands that there's been quite a bit of escalation since then. But also codes have changed, energy codes have changed, requirements have changed. And so that has impacted what goes into all of these projects. And so they have become cost drivers as well. So this project, as it compares to other projects that are of similar type and are in similar phases with MSBA. Right now, those ranges are between 673 and $907 per square foot. And square footage is the best way to evaluate these because all of these are different sizes. The sites are different sizes. So we look at it to compare with our project by cost per square foot. And Wilmington currently at PSR is coming in at a range of 742 to $828 per square foot. So we're right in the range of other projects with MSBA. So this is a snapshot of the nine options that need to be shortlisted into really one option. One preferred option to move into the next phase, which is schematic design. And it gives you a snapshot of the cost comparison or the cost between each. So we also took a stab at looking at the potential local share. Now, we can't guarantee what MSBA's reimbursement is going to be. So we just took a, we considered what they would potentially look at as eligible for MSBA reimbursement to reflect what the local share would potentially be. And MSBA has caps on certain items such as site. And so we factored all of that in as best as we could. And the impact that the, for this local share, the smaller delta with Wildwood and Woburn Street sites as compared to North Intermediate site are pretty obvious here, but overall, you know, you see that there is a difference. And so to better understand the long range impact to Wilmington, we considered what the local share would be with any of the school buildings that would not be addressed with this project. So for a pre K K option, for example, if that was selected as the preferred alternative, we would still have to look at projects at the Woburn Street School and the North Intermediate School. And the numbers here are from those repair only options that we talked about earlier that MSBA asks us to carry as for cost comparison. And, you know, this is a perfect place where we can utilize those numbers. For pre K three, you have, you would have two schools addressed with the projects. You would only be left with one additional project to be completed in the future at North Intermediate. And so that ranged from 133 to 147 million dollars for potential local share. And then when you look at pre K five, you know, you only have the one project. You don't have to look at two additional projects in the future. And so the local share is actually less, which is 122 range to 138 million dollar range. And so we worked with the town and they actually put together these numbers here. And this was to give an estimate on the impact and the tax impact for households. And so you can see from a pre K K option, you get an annual tax increase on an average home to be about $160 up to $370, depending on which option. And that would have a monthly impact between 13 and 31 dollars. For a pre K three option, it looks at, you know, an increase of $590 and a monthly impact of $49. And a pre K five option would have an annual tax impact of 710 to 730 dollars with a monthly impact of, you know, somewhere between 59 and 61 dollars. So to touch on some of the community outreach, you know, we have always invited for community members to stay connected in many ways. This is a list of, you know, opportunities throughout the process where information was either shared with community out or members were allowed to or invited to attend public meetings, plus community forums. And even the committee had looked at providing information at fun on the fourth. And throughout the process, we've also tried to survey the community as well to get an idea of where they stand about the project, being that this is such a big decision for the community. The last community forum was actually community forum number four, but that survey is actually still open right now, so we will be finalizing those results tomorrow. But at the previous community forum, number three, we asked the community, you know, who was participating. And as you can see, there was a large contingent of parents and community members that were represented. And overall, we asked, there were several questions on, you know, the options. We asked about pre K K options solely, then pre K three, pre K five. But at the end, we did ask a question of folks to talk about which one was their preferred option. And overall, it was that the pre K five options were preferred and also new construction alternatives were preferred. We also have the fun at the fourth survey results where the majority of people had students in the school system that responded in the survey. They were all, the majority was in favor of school consolidation. When asked to rank the options, the pre K five new at north was ranked as the highest. And this has been consistent in all of the forums that we have presented at so far. And we did also ask, the last question was about the gymnasium, being that the pre K five option has a 12,000 square foot gymnasium and MSBA typically reimburses for the standard sized gymnasium, which is the 6,000 square feet. So the other half would technically not be covered by MSBA. And so the community would be responsible for that cost. But the responses were overwhelmingly in support of a larger gymnasium still to support community events as well as the larger school. And throughout the phases, we have, the district website has a page just for the Wildwood project. And there are, you know, FAQ, all of the presentations are posted on there as well. And all of the meetings have been streamed on WCTV. So we've been working to get the word out as best we can and provide information so it's available at the convenience of members looking to seek information. So that's where we are today. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions. I know that was a lot of information, but hopefully it wasn't too new for you.
That's, that's great. Thank you so much for, for being here and for presenting. I know you guys are going to be at the select board meeting in a little while, so appreciate you doing this. Turn it over to members of the committee. It might be hard for me to see you guys, but I see Mike's hand. Mike, you can go first.
Sure, thanks. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I thought it was very insightful to kind of see everything like laid out that way. Just a couple of quick questions. So the range of construction costs I saw in a cost per square foot, I thought that was really good how you showed that. There was a couple of schools I saw on that slide, I think the town and also Bartlett, where they had a little lower cost per square foot. And I'm just wondering through the building committee or through your work, if maybe we can get any learnings from those projects to see how we can potentially reduce some cost for this project.
Share Ronnie's mic. The, the couple of mollys I think that you saw with the lower cost per square foot. And that is a list from MSBA that's published on their website and it includes new construction. Includes renovation addition projects that also have, you know, varying degrees of how much of an existing building that they saved. Bartlett's actually a high, junior, senior high school in Webster, Massachusetts. We actually had the good fortune of doing two other school projects with them, so we're quite familiar with them. And they had an addition renovation project with pretty limited renovation scope in some areas of the building. Their building was, you know, built in the late seventies, so it's vintage and their infrastructure systems and their existing support structure was completely different condition than what we're talking about here in Wilmington. So that cost per square foot for their project, because their scope was decreased from what we're proposing, was less. So some of those projects that you see in there with the lower cost per square footage, they're typically renovation projects. And as you see those start squeezing up towards the new construction cost, those are all new and fairly consistent depending on the year that they were built.
Okay, great. And then one other question, the tax impact slide, I think was really insightful. I did see a little bit of a disconnect where I think on the first slide, you showed if we renovate, if let's say we just build Wildwood and then we have to renovate the other two, here's the roll up of the total cost. But then on the individual tax burden, it just showed if we actually do the individual projects. And something I'd be curious about is, let's say we rebuild Wildwood or just repair Wildwood. We still have the other two schools we have to renovate. What would that roll up of total tax burden look like, right? Would it become a little higher and more in line with what building up new pre K through five would be?
Sure, the, the reason we did that is because we can't accurately predict how you would execute a repair project locally. There's been a discussion about, you know, how you would approach it because Ronnie mentioned code triggers. And really what that has to do with, you know, thresholds of intervention into the building. So if, take the handicap accessibility code, for instance, right? What we would do is we'd go back and look at what the assessed value of that building is. And if we impact 30% of that assessed value, we have to take the whole building and bring it up to code. So to try and avoid that, right? What some communities do if they don't have the money to be able to execute a full project, we'll try and stretch that out over time. So what we can tell you is the fastest and cheapest way to execute that project is do it as we've shown it, to do it all at once. Anything that extends it out further than what we've shown, the price is going to go up by escalation. It's going to go up by mobilization and demobilization of a contractor. So we're trying to give you the lowest cost approach for comparative analysis on these. Now, they aren't rolled up into the tax impact, right? Because we don't know how you would approach those. A repair project would be 100% locally on the tax rate. MSBA will not contribute that because you're not taking care of your long-term educational needs. So when you do look at the, the local share, you start to see, you know, from the project cost local share, those ranges really, when you take into account those repair projects are really all overlapping from pre K to five, right down to the pre K to K. The difference obviously is in the tax impact, which on the pre K K is only looking at the tax impact for that specific project for pre K K. It doesn't look at tax implications of how you would fund those repair projects. Does that make sense?
That does make sense. Yeah, so essentially you're not in a position to really understand what the tax impact would be for renovating the other schools because you don't know how the town would approach it, but you understand how we would approach it under the MSBA grant, correct? Yeah, so that might just be something for, if anyone is on the building committee, may want to take that to that building committee to kind of probe a little bit further. Because I feel there could be a little bit of confusion in the community around, well, let's just go do Wildwood and then the other two schools will be okay. But really, these other two schools will need to be addressed and those costs could be, you know, could escalate more than what's seen here, right?
Right. And, and the question that we're really not asking in any of that, right? Is those are big ticket numbers just for the repair, right? And that's just extend the life, you know, put an expensive Band-Aid on the building, extend that life for another 50 years. We're not doing any changes to the floor plan. We're not doing any changes to educational, you know, layouts and improvements. So it's a big investment to extend the life of the building for 50 years and you make no educational improvements. And now, you know, basically you have a building designed in 1960, now that you're extending out for education that was back in 1960.
Yeah, makes sense. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike, Nick, and then Steven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and I want to kind of echo some of the comments that Dr. Recalde made. But mostly I want to say, being on the school building committee, first of all, you guys have put in a ton of work, so thank you. I mean, this is, I only was one to it very recently, but I can tell this has been a process. I do want to ask or bring up one point. I, I do want to ask or bring up one point for the, for the public's benefit that, you know, at the forum we just had, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ronnie or Lee, is that, you know, the, the town manager told us basically that were we to go with this pre K through five option, it would quite likely be a debt exclusion. And traditionally in our community, what we've done is that tax number you see there, that's $700 odd is no joke. That's no joke for a yearly tax bill. You know, folks are on fixed incomes. We should mention that. However, we would step down over time, but that is the impression I got with a debt exclusion. So it wouldn't be that number at infinitum, right? It would come down. You know, so I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you. And I guess question more of a comment, but I just want to say, you know, it's clear from what we're getting in terms of survey responses and the public's input. I don't know about my fellow members of the committee, but I've received unanimous support from all the emails I've gotten from, from town residents of a pre K through five. The surveys in favor of pre K through five. If we were to revisit the slide that looked at the local cost share and as you were just talking about, the cost just to repair the other schools and just do the Wildwood now and stretch that out over time with how bad inflation is, would cost the town much more in the long term, you know? It's like if I am a homeowner and I have a boiler, we just had to replace our boiler this year, you know, bought the house, first thing we did was replace it. If you have three boilers and they all need to be replaced, you should replace it with one boiler, right? Rather than try to spread it out and just keep taking, you know, taking the hits monetarily. So yeah, again, that my main question was reiterating what the town manager said, which is if it were a debt, debt exclusion vote we went with, probably would see that tax rate step down. But I think it's clear that in the long term, the financially responsible choice for the town is a pre K through five, full stop. So, thank you.
I, I do think those were two important pieces that the town manager provided, you know, one is the fact that this would be a debt excluded vote, not a debt override. So it's only, you know, increasing the tax rate for the burden of the bond period. And the other piece is he did mention that this is a declining payment form. So year one is the most expensive. And then it gradually comes down over progressive years. And I do think there are potentially a couple or at least a project coming off the tax rolls on a debt excluded vote as well, like high school, you know, sometime out in the future, which, you know, should help as well.
Thank you. Stephen.
So going back to that slide, and I, I think it's the most important, I've heard, first of all, agree with the commentary from Dr. McCallie and Mr. Golden. And again, thank you for all you've done and the whole committee, the amount of work that's gone on so far is amazing. But that particular slide that does show the comparison and the MSBA portion, what I would find to be most interesting if we were to take that one step further, and I know it's, it's, it's a theory at that point, but to add in the educational program and not repair only, but renovate those two buildings at repair only, we're at parity in cost, if not a little bit more expensive. If we were to add in the cost to renovate North and Wuburn Street, or just North, depending on which option were chosen, it would far exceed even in today's dollars, never mind spreading it out. And so when we think about the priority for us is the education of the children, then that cost is massively higher if we do it in three, two or three phases as opposed to one. And so that's the place where I think the one piece that I feel is potentially missed is repair only doesn't, you, you've said it several times, doesn't address the educational piece, but what's the cost of the renovation to the buildings to bring them to the educational program is significant and would, would even skew the picture further towards the direction of a single newer, new building. It is, it is clear, the more times you put the shovel in the ground, the more expensive it is. So thank you very much again for your time and for the presentation.
Stephen, I think you can start to see a little bit of that, right? If you just did some of the math on the cost per square foot of the repair only projects to the existing square footage versus the all new construction and that cost per square footage. So you can start to see, right, the repair projects are like a third of the cost of projects that do improve the educational part of the project as well. So it is your, to your point, it's a much more expensive project if you were not just doing infrastructure and you were trying to help out the educational programs as well.
Thank you.
David.
I'd just like to add that following, following up on the sort of interpretation of the, the financial burden, that the, so the town manager, obviously it's going to depend, everyone's actual tax burden will depend on the assessed value of their house. And so Mr. Schlegel kind of did what I, what seems like the most logical thing to do, which is to pick the average assessed value of a home in Wilmington to generate those numbers. And I believe that that was about $684,000, as I think was the number that, that is the, the value of the, the assessed value of the average house in Wilmington. And so houses that are assessed at higher values will of course have a higher tax impact. And at a lower value will have a lower tax impact. And essentially you can just kind of work proportionately from there that whatever percentage greater or lower the value of your property may be from that $684,000 average, you can proportionally also increase or decrease what the yearly and monthly tax impact would be for you specifically.
Thank you. Jen?
Hi, thank you. I'll just reiterate, thank you so much, the building committee, and I'm so thrilled, Ronnie and Lee, with this presentation because watching this project over the last four years or three, well, four, three, four years in my, from an educator standpoint, I was always in support of consolidation because I know that that is what's best for, for elementary students. So to see this come out and to hear that this could be the fastest and cheapest way to do this for these three buildings is like, okay, good, because now it's matching what I know about what's best for kids. And so I'm, I'm really thrilled with this presentation. I think it really sends home the message that, that we need, but also helps me to start to see, okay, this is the preferred option. We know that saying, you know, similar to what Nick was saying, I've been getting just so much feedback and emails from the community supporting this pre K to five consolidation, even before the numbers came out, but now that they've started to tease this out, they're sort of like, oh, okay, I'm still really excited about it. So I think there's some real excitement around this option and I'm just grateful that we've done our due diligence to get to this point. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I think I'll just, you know, I always say I will, I will come on here and just echo my colleagues, but I, I mostly echo what they've said and, and all of the questions that I had coming into this, this meeting were answered by the presentation. So I, Ronnie, Lee, really sincere thank you. I think it's, it's, it's excellent. It's really well put together. And I think it speaks to a lot of the questions that I've heard from other members of the community. So much appreciated. And so I think with that, that's, that's it from the committee. Glenn, if you have anything else, or Ronnie Lee, if you want to say anything in closing, but really appreciate it. And I know we'll see you guys in a little while later on, but thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Thanks, Lee. Thanks, Ronnie. They are great partners in, in this work and it's certainly great to see it progress to this stage. You know, they, they've also been very helpful for us. So I'll transition to the next item within this agenda item, and that's the education program plan. Christine and I and our colleagues have had the opportunity to work very, very closely with both Lee and Ronnie on developing this really important document for the MSBA on the educational program plan. A lot of this talk, of course, is about the infrastructure in the building itself, but obviously what's most important is what's going to be planned to take place in the building and inside the walls. You have a lot of documentation, apologize for that, but we do need to bring it back before you. They have been helpful at the very outset. You'll recall the school committee received our, our original rendition or version of the educational program plan back in the spring of last school year. You approved that plan. You'll recall, and then we submitted that to the MSBA for their review. As you'll see in the, in the memo and the accompanying documentation, they did review it. They provided the district and our team with a number of comments, some questions, some seeking of clarification. And in turn, we worked to generate that. We tried to provide a roadmap for the committee and for anyone in the community following along and what that exactly looked like. So you have a red line version that tracks those changes, your original questions with our responses respectively for those items, and then a final clean copy. It is a requirement that we bring this back before the committee for approval. This will then get submitted again to the MSBA as sort of our final draft. I'm not sure before, and Christine's here to jump in in a moment. I don't know, Lee, if you want to, or Ronnie, want to add any other context to that, but I know you've been a good partner with us on this document as well.
Thanks, Dr. Brand. I, I think that's the really important piece. And as you can see, when we outline the timeframe of what we've been working on, we spent a year working on the development of the program, right? That's foundational for any project to get a good start. And I'm really comfortable with the work that the district put into that. And I think you see that representative from, you know, some of the limited, in my experience, comments that came back from MSBA. Now usually we see, and I think this is our 18th MSBA project. So we've, we've been through a lot of these and had a lot of these comments coming back through. And so I think it was really well done. You know, the comments that came back to them were pretty straightforward and just really trying to make sure that we're focusing on our needs for the future, that we thought through scheduling aspects of this, we thought through staffing aspects of consolidation. And I think we did a really good job. And I think the revisions and what we're going to be putting back in front of them should clearly answer all their questions. So I think it was a really good job by the district in mapping out what is a really big lift, you know, mapping out an educational plan for your whole district, you know, as part of this process. So really happy with that outcome and that, that portion of the project.
Thanks, Lee. We can have Christine, you want to just jump in quick, if you will, and take the committee quickly through sort of what the big items are?
Sure. So I think probably the easiest way to really hit on the big key items is looking at the Q and A. So the questions from the MSBA with the blue responses. So you have, you know, several documents, but that was really what kind of, you know, we started with when this came back to us and we sort of divided and conquered with some of the things that were really, we needed to discuss at the district level, some of the things that were more related to square footage and those questions we left to Doran Whittier to address. But some of the key things that came up are, look, I, I, I would say that a lot of them were looking for us to elaborate on specific things such as, you know, what a health special subject might look like for kindergarten, for, for example, you know, most districts or many districts don't offer health as a specialist subject at the elementary grade level where we do. So there were questions around that. We, as, as you know, in the original proposal, we talked about adding a STEM specialist. There are very specific things that you need to include in a building project if you are adding STEM as a special subject, including the full-time staff. So there were questions around what that, how that space would be used, how, what the curriculum would entail, some questions that we're just looking for more specificity on, on what that program would look like. I'm trying to think of some of the other big key items here. Teacher collaboration space was another one, you know, how would we use that space? Would it be, you know, there was questions around whether or not it would actually be used for student instruction. So we just clarified that it's really for teachers for data meetings and it would be all used, you know, used by adult educators or in staff members and not our students. So we clarified that. We talked, there were some questions in there specific to ensuring that multilingual learners are, have an opportunity to, you know, we encourage them to share expressions, customs and stories from their native language. So we spoke about how we're currently doing that and, and in our existing structures, but how we would continue to plan to do that in a new building. There are questions around the equity piece for cares and musical instruments, for example. If a family is unable to pay, what policies or protocols we have in place to help support families who may need financial assistance for their students to be able to participate. So we spoke about that. Think of some of the other larger. Oh, one of the key questions was related to, you know, a new building would have obviously new types of spaces and opportunities. How would we go about training staff to really fully utilize the new space to look at what, you know, how we might use some of the flex space in the building as effectively as possible. And so we talked a little bit about the possibility of working with other school districts who have actually already begun, you know, they've finished a project and have lived in it to try and learn from them. What were some great takeaways that they learned as they, you know, began working in their new building? And what worked well for them, what didn't. So our professional development committee would do some work around exploring that and getting ideas and, and visiting hopefully other school districts. There were questions around sound field systems in the, you know, in the new proposed project, they would be part of the each of the classrooms as opposed to right now where we are placing them more based on student need, but this would be more of an inclusive model where those would be in all classrooms. Same thing around, they wanted to better understand how we support adaptable physical education for students with special needs. So we provide that, provided that explanation as we currently do that now. We clarified roles and what it might look like for, you know, how our administration might be, you know, redeployed in different ways, depending on the different enrollment, whatever enrollment was selected for this project. They wanted specifics around, as I mentioned before, around STEM, like what would the room look like? What would, what activities would be taking place? And they provided us with a bunch of resources around the MSBA's STE guidelines that we were able to review and, and ensure that we had that included in our plans. Let's see. I think some of those were some of the bigger key pieces. Dr. Brand, can you think of anything else that?
I think you, I think you have, thank you. So we're happy to entertain any questions that you may have, but ultimately we are looking for your vote of approval of the revisions to the education program plan tonight.
All right, Glenn, Christine, thank you. Questions? Mike?
Thanks, Jesse. Yeah, thanks, Glenn. Maybe just a clarification of it for the community's benefit. We kind of talked about in this program plan and at a high level, like a modern educational facility. We're all very in tune on what that needs to look like, but some people maybe that are tuning into this project kind of understand like education from when they were in school, like, you know, one kind of school with the desk all in a row, looking forward at the chalkboard. What is at a high level? What, what does that modern education look like? And where are schools right now not able to supply that? And where could these potential changes to the schools really help supply that?
So I'll take a pass, but certainly I'll welcome my colleagues to join in. You know, what we're really talking about is more than just a, a building that is modern in terms of the infrastructure of say, technology alone, although technology and sound acoustics that helps enhance the, the exchange between a student and teacher in a classroom is one thing, but to me, this really goes about right sizing the different spaces within a, an educational environment that we know that in order to reach and appropriately serve students with a wide variety of needs, there needs to be a, a variation in teaching and learning spaces besides a traditional 900, 1,000, whatever, 1,100 square foot classroom. That includes spaces that are appropriate to service occupational therapy, physical therapy, special education, speech and language. So there's a, there's a wide array of spaces and their design that we know are necessary in a contemporary or modern facility to best support teaching and learning. There's a, there's a whole lot, certainly more in terms of, you know, things that can provide great benefits like the appropriate natural lighting, artificial lighting, corridor spaces, transition spaces. The list is long, but it really, to me, I think the heart of this is about when we think about sort of this repair to our existing schools, to me, that's changing out, you know, the boilers, the roofs, the windows, the envelope issues. It's not redesigning the core space to best be able to serve students in the variations of needs that we know how best to do that now in comparison to say 1960.
Yeah. No, thanks for that. So just to paraphrase a little bit, essentially it's, it's a lot more open space, more collaboration space really. So the kids essentially it's, it's a lot more open space, more collaboration space really. So the kids can kind of get up, move around and have more of that interactive learning environment, right? As opposed to just they sit in their chairs all day. And that's what kind of if we repaired the existing schools, that envelope would still be there, right?
That's part of it, but I would also well add, you know, it not delivering certain services, say in a hallway or in a, in, in what was designed, say to be a closet, but an appropriate space that has exterior windows, appropriate lighting. Um, you know, that's, that's our reality, like it would be for other school districts who have this vintage of schools where space is tight. Space is tight in all of these schools. I know that people are focused on, is, you know, is our, our enrollment going down? Um, you know, sure, that, that is happening in the background, but what does not change, what further study has shown us a number of years ago, in fact, Doran Whittier's firm did this for us, is that most of our elementary schools are, are, uh, tight for space and they're tight for these spaces, uh, these kinds of services that I'm talking about here that we just don't have. Hence why we have to deliver, you know, reading instruction. And I'm truly not trying to be overly dramatic. It is a reality in some of our buildings, you know, reading instruction in what was at one time a closet. You know, or some of it. So that's happening and that's really what we're, we're trying to compete against here in terms of reality of thinking about the future.
Great. No, thank you for that.
Uh, Stephen and then David, and I will remind folks not to push it too, too much, but let's be mindful of time because we do have another meeting we need to get to. So.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be very brief. Um, so two things. One, the educational program, I found to be a tremendous document and I'd, and it's impressive how little needed to change with the feedback from MSBA. It's, it's interesting as somebody who hasn't done an MSBA project before to see the type of feedback they provide, but it was interesting to see how closely aligned we were. And the part I take most about spaces and educational spaces is how many of our children need something. Some kids need a lot. They need occupational, physical, they need speech and speech therapy, and they need to use a lot of different spaces for that. But a lot of kids also need just one. They need just a reading specialist or a math specialist. And all of those spaces impact a huge portion of the population of the schools. So it's, it is a beneficial thing for an enormous number of children. And when we talk about that as specialized education or special education or, or the multi-tiered systems of support, it really does encompass enormous number of the children in the school. And when we're trying to do the right thing for the children of the school, it's a way to address a lot of kids at one time with the right sorts of spaces where it's not something that's really facilitated with the current buildings. Thank you.
Uh, so I, I will, I will also be brief. Um, I will echo Mr. Turner that, uh, I think that this is an excellent document. The first time I read it back when it was first presented to us, uh, I mean, I still learned a ton about nuts. Oh, I didn't know we did that. Like I, it, it's a such a soup to nuts presentation of our entire elementary program. Uh, and you also of course see the things that we can't yet do. And that kind of brings me to one other word that I would put on the, on the spaces that we're looking for is flexible. That, uh, the more flexible the spaces, not only does that give us, um, a lot more ability to, you know, use them, use them in different ways, but it also to some extent kind of future proofs, um, what the building can do. So there, you know, education is not going to stay still. Um, but having flexible spaces means that we will be better able to adapt as things go forward as well.
Thank you, David. Anything else? Jen?
Sorry, I was trying not to, but I just wanna, just one last comment and then I promise that's it. I just want to make the point, we talk about all these spaces and sometimes we'll hear that things are changing or our students are changing. And I just want to make a point that we're getting better at the work we do as educators. We're getting better at knowing how to meet needs of all children so that all children can meet the same standards. And I think I just want to make that point that it's not, well, what's happening and why isn't it? I think it's that we're just getting so good at, at really breaking down the tiered intervention that our students, that so many of our students have always needed, but now we're better at assessing to know exactly what they need. And so those spaces and those flexible spaces really do provide this incredible support that schools should have been providing when these schools were built, but didn't necessarily know what we know now. So I just like to make that point because I hear some of this and I get nervous that people who aren't in this field might say, wait, what's happening? And so I think it's important just to bring us back to that point. That's it. I'm done.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, all right. With that, I would entertain a motion. Stephen?
I'm moved to accept the updated educational pro, uh, program as submitted.
Thank you. Second by Jen. All right. Motion made by Mr. Turner, seconded by Dr. Bryson. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Dr. Brand, I think you're up again, right?
And, um, Ronnie Lee, thank you for staying. I know that you should probably run. We'll let you go. Appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you both so much.
Um, third item tonight is a great, uh, reconfiguration, grade level reconfiguration, my apologies. There is, uh, there's an item memo in the packet as well too, to speak to this. This is a, um, it's just a, a practical matter that, uh, this project in turn, and we need to, uh, seek your, um, approval tonight. As mapped out in the, in the memo and the accompanying draft memo, because we, we don't know yet clearly what the school building committee is going to decide upon in terms of an option. Um, but if any option other than a pre-K K is selected, that would, a pre-K three, a pre-K five, that would clearly change the nature of our school grade level designs. And because of that, the MSBA requires a community such as ours, a district to, um, ensure that the support is behind that grade level reconfiguration. Um, so this is a, I, I know some might suggest, well, isn't this a little bit ahead of what the building committee may decide? And that is true, uh, with your willingness to support this. Um, in, in other words, as trying to suggest whatever the building committee ultimately decides, the question to you as a school committee is, will you ultimately be supportive of that if that includes a grade level reconfiguration change? You'll note that the memo, um, sorry, the letter to MSBA has to be signed by three parties. That is the school committee chair, superintendent of schools, um, and the chief executive officer. That term is used by the MSBA sometimes that's, but in our case here in Wilmington, that does specifically tie to the town manager. So the town manager, I would imagine would also wish to, or would want to bring this form, uh, before the select board. So with that, I'll pause. If there are any questions you have, but looking ultimately for your hopeful approval and support of the chair of the school committee and myself as the superintendent of schools to sign this form if necessary, depending on the building committee's decision.
That's good. Thank you, Glenn. Questions, comments from the committee? Okay. With that then, I guess, uh, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move. I move to, uh, adopt the plan as proposed by the superintendent.
Okay, thank you. Second. Mr. Turner. Okay, motion made in support by Nick, seconded by Stephen. Discussion. All is in favor? Uh, it looks unanimous. Thank you. So, uh, sorry, Glenn, I, is there one other or was that, that was the end of it?
Uh, well, there is one more, if you're willing, uh, that's the presentation.
Yep. Oh, right. I'm so sorry. Yep.
That's okay. Hopefully you can see that. Okay?
We can.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, there is a memo, uh, in, uh, the packet as well too. And this is a presentation that, uh, trying to be as brief as I can here. I know time is pressing. Um, uh, around, uh, really thinking ahead about our future and I've, as you can imagine, doing an awful lot about that, uh, in terms of, uh, the direction that this, um, this project may, may ultimately take. There's a lot for the community, the building committee, and I know other respective committees to really think about. And of course the citizens in the community of, of Wilmington. Um, you know, we, we are here talking about new elementary schools. We, we started this, uh, this, this journey to, uh, replace the Wildwood Early Childhood Center. Uh, but we also at the time expressed an interest. And when I say we, it was more than me, it was more than you, it was also the select board at the time to explore and be open to, um, um, exploring school consolidation, the possibility of bringing more than one school under one roof. Um, and over time, um, this has been a growing question, sort of where did this come from? Uh, but I think it's important just to point out that it's not new. It has, um, certainly, uh, you know, its, its, its origins back to at the very least, the town facilities master plan. Ultimately, right, the, the, give the end away, some have sort of wondered recently and been asking me about what my recommendation is. Uh, well, only one voice in the building committee, uh, that I recognize. Um, I, I really do believe that the preferred option, the best option, uh, that, um, is before us is the pre-K to grade five elementary school. Um, and with the sites that we have at the North Intermediate Site. I, I base that recommendation on a number of things, community sentiment, the need for modernized educational facilities. We talked a little bit about that tonight. Um, really about bringing at the heart of it improvement, improved conditions, sorry, for teaching and learning. And also thinking about equity and access, access for our students. And I'll explain a little bit more. So again, this, this idea of consolidation is not new. And I know I've heard some recently in the last few weeks sort of question where that came from. Um, it may well be, uh, it may have longer history than pointing just back to the town's facilities master plan. Uh, I was not here at the time, but I did come into the district at the completion of that facilities master plan. If one was to take a look at that plan, it very, very clearly underscores, uh, uh, an appetite by those that contributed to that plan to explore school consolidation. For the many reasons that have been talked about, I won't expand upon that, but, uh, in, in, in recent times, it's got its origin then. As I mentioned, the select board and the school committee signaled the clear support when we submitted our statement of interest in 2020 to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So too did the residents who came forward at special town meeting when it was put forth for them to secure the funding to kickstart this project, knowing that this project indeed would explore, uh, school consolidation. Educational vision process that, uh, we had as a reminder, well over fifty stakeholders from all different pockets of our community. Uh, residents, parent guardians, educators and so on back in the fall. Um, and most recently, uh, very variety of community project forums that have identified an interest indeed in exploring school consolidation. We talked sometime tonight at length around modernized educational facilities. Um, again, I, I just want to stress and say one more time, this is not about, um, from my perspective, trying to argue with the degree that our school buildings have been maintained by our town, uh, departments and employees. They have been and they've been well maintained. But they are aging and they, as we talked about, uh, tonight, um, they are, as facilities built in the sixties or the fifties, just can't provide what ultimately is best to support teaching and learning in, uh, 2024. Um, everything, and this is a shortlist from climate control to, um, educational spaces that can support all students. Safety and security enhancements, uh, accessibility, our buildings struggle, many of our buildings struggle to truly be able to provide accessible spaces for all students, uh, and adults for that matter. And, um, and adult and community interactions in best order to capitalize on what a school can do to its community. Um, in terms of a comparison, a lot of numbers here, I won't go through them, but this is a snapshot of surrounding communities that, uh, that Wilmington touches, if you will. It gives you a snapshot of the age of their elementary facilities, the grade level configuration of their facilities, and what, if any renovations have taken place or repairs and such over time. Um, I don't think there's a singular conclusion that can be drawn from review of, review of this data. Um, but, uh, not surprisingly, dates are all over the place, but I would suggest that many of the communities that we touch have seen certainly updates or have, have, uh, elementary school facilities that, um, are, are more current in terms of the age of when they were built or the renovations that were completed. And I certainly would note that, um, most of them, not all, but most of them are structured in K five with pre-K five format. Consolidation and teaching and learning, what are the benefits? Um, you know, I, I really do think that there are many, uh, in the interest of time. Uh, I won't go deep into any of these, but, you know, from the standpoint of trying to support students and being in one place for a longer period of time as opposed to transitioning, change is hard on any, of any age. If you think about that through the perspective of the young child, five years old, six years old, having to sort of move their home every couple of years, um, it, it works, but just imagine the, uh, the benefits of staying in one place for a longer period of time. The same holds true for families. Um, our families have do a phenomenal job to try and partner with our schools. But I know I hear often, it's hard for them going into a new facility, learning new staff, and then having to peel out, go into the next one. Um, the optimization of staffing is something that, uh, could be a whole meeting in terms of some of the challenges of trying to, uh, oversee the management, um, and orchestration of our staffing and programs and services over so many smaller schools. Same holds true for leadership support, consistency of practices going from one school to the next, and duplication of resources. Uh, it's not the most efficient system, uh, in terms of the deployment of resources that we have. I also think that there's a piece of connection here with equity and access across the town. And I say that in the sense of knowing that whatever the ultimate project is, people very quickly and very understandably will be left to wonder what happens next for the other facilities. We, it's, it's a logical question, given that all of our facilities are effectively the same age and none have had any, um, major renovations. Repairs, yes, but renovations, no. And so what we're really thinking about, you know, is how many projects would then that have to be, whether they're, uh, repair only or renovation? If a pre-K grade three option is selected, um, from my vantage point, the way that I look at this, what we're really talking about is three future additional projects. Um, and these are not necessarily in any particular order, but the north will certainly have to be addressed at some point. So too would be a pre-K grade three on the other side of, uh, our community. And then a third project, uh, the renovation of the west. Um, I think that that's just an important piece. And in terms of equity and access, um, this could take some time, a time to be still determined. Um, and certainly there would not be the similar, uh, uh, teaching and management conditions. Um, and so here, uh, trying to think about, um, uh, a variation of time, thinking about time. And this is all predicated on if MSBA funding were the necessary, um, way in which these projects could only be completed. Um, each bridge of building project, we talked about this before, is approximately seven years. That's what the MSBA suggests. That's what this project will be somewhere in that neighborhood of the, if it was three building projects. And if MSBA funding was the key to make that project possible, and there were three projects, this is an estimate that takes us out to twenty forty-nine, if the community was invited in every time that they apply. Compare that to a pre-K, pre-K to grade five option with, um, one additional building project. Um, and, you know, depending on the time, uh, the completion, uh, could be certainly much sooner than twenty forty. So, um, I'll leave you with that, uh, in terms of, you know, one voice on the building committee of which I only am, uh, but certainly wanted to share that with this opportunity as we get closer to the, the vote, what I think would be, uh, represents the best option for our community to consider. Um, and thank you for your time. You don't need to have any questions. I'm happy to take them if you have any, but thanks for the opportunity to share it today.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. And of course, uh, if there are any questions, uh, members of the committee should feel free. I do also think that, that i- if there are none or after there, uh, it's a good opportunity for us as a committee to, you, you know, the select board is meeting tonight, the Wildwood Building Committee is meeting tomorrow. And so I know we haven't necessarily gotten our thoughts, opinions on this project out for the public consumption. So I don't know that we need a motion and a formal vote, but I do think much like we did, uh, before town meeting when there was the renaming of the Wildwood, we sort of came to a consensus. So, uh, I will ask that if there are questions for Dr. Brand that we consider doing that afterwards. But Mike, you have your hand up, so you can go first.
Sure. Thank you. Um, yeah, so I think I just kind of want to make a comment more. So I want to thank Dr. Brand for all his thought and to his recommendation and everything like that. Uh, I, I definitely agree on the K through five consolidation. I, I, I think not only for the reasons that Dr. Brand put out there. I, I just think it makes a lot of sense to actually get these facilities consolidated into one site. Um, speaking for myself here, as someone who's a parent of uh, elementary school children on the north side of town, navigating all three schools has been quite a challenge for so many reasons. And all the transitions are, were very hard on my children. So I think what's good for, I, I feel that that would translate to the whole community. And I've heard that feedback from a lot of families around town as well. So I'm very much in support of that. Um, one question I would want to pose for the building committee though, is, uh, falling back on costs, right? Nothing comes for free here, right? I understood, I think this is an initial roll up, right, on what we would want or what the committee would want. I would like to ask the building committee to kind of revisit the initial plans to see if there's any way we can be more efficient with the design of the school. See if there's any way we can reduce the cost in order to reduce the burden on the taxpayer while still delivering a modern educational facility for our students and families. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Others? Don't all jump at once, guys. Okay.
Well, thank you, Dr. Brand. I appreciate the presentation. I um I will reiterate, I think, most of what Mike said. I, I too, while recognizing that the, the cost uh was a bit of sticker shock, maybe, um, for all of the positives and, and upsides that we've mentioned throughout this meeting and previous meetings. I too uh am supportive of the K to five consolidation. I too am a parent on the north side of town who had children go through these schools and, and saw what those transitions sort of, you know, could potentially wreak havoc and, you know, trying to coordinate pickup times at different buildings. And, and so for any number of reasons, I too am, am supportive of the, the K to five consolidation. Thank you.
Jen?
Sorry, Jesse, do you want us, because ever, some of us have already stated, I think, where we, um, what we were in favor of. Do you need us to do something more formal than that?
No, I, I don't think we need a, a motion necessarily, Glenn, and I, I don't think you envisioned that either. I just, I, I, it sounds like, I'll ask you guys maybe just to correct me if I'm wrong. Sounds like we are, as a committee, in favor of the K to five option. And so, much like we did when we were talking about the renaming of the Woburn Street School, we discussed and we kind of came to a consensus that we were not in favor of that. So that way, if the question was asked, we could say, yes, that's how the committee feels. So that's kind of what I was looking for.
So to, 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 to that end, there are two primary questions. One, what's best for the children and the education of the children? And two, what's the most fiscally responsible thing? And I think there is no scenario in which doing anything other than pre-K through five consolidation once and certainly twice then to be equitable and appropriate is the, is by far the best educational solution for the children and the best fiscally responsible solution for the town. And the sooner we do it, the better, because it's only going to get more expensive.
Thank you, Stephen. Jen, go ahead.
Yeah, and just for the record, one more time, I, I concur. I agree with my colleagues.
Awesome. Very good. All right, so with that, uh, I think that concludes our agenda for the most part. Uh, we do have some future school committee dates and notable items at the bottom of our agenda, including the next Wildwood School Building Committee meeting tomorrow at six thirty, both in the high school and via Zoom. Uh, first day of school for grades one through twelve is on the twenty eighth. First day for pre-K and kindergarten is on September fourth. School open houses are all listed in the agenda and on the district website calendar. I'm not going to list them all. Our next regular meeting is September eleventh at seven P M. And the next, but not next, Wildwood School Building Committee meeting will be on September seventeenth at six thirty P M. I know we pushed public comment, so we will get to that in just a second. I just wanted to make sure we got through everything we needed to get to. Stephen, correspondence or no?
No, no correspondence this evening.
No correspondence this evening. Okay. Uh, so we have a few folks who are here. Uh, it's got one person raising their hand for public comment, so uh, we ask you if you could state your name for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. So, Michael, when you're ready, please feel free.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Michael.
Yep, I'm Michael Camosio, nineteen, D'Arthia. Um, first, I want to thank Dr. Brand for the presentation today and all the material. Um, as a voting member of the school building committee, myself, I wanted to hear what this committee wants for the project. Um, my background can let, best lend to the best construction option and could also lend to what other parents prefer. But my qualifications is not on the best education option. So I was very happy to hear uh most of you um state your opinion or previously state before that what you feel is the best project. Um, I think from my construction background, the cost estimates that we looked through and we've seen when you take considerations of repairs, the costs are somewhat similar. If anything, the pre-K to five may be cheaper. Um, we understand members of the community want to hear a little bit more, and as a committee, we're going to work on how we can better convey repair costs for other options if we did do uh pre-K to three, for example. Um, I appreciate everyone stating their opinions tonight, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you for all your work on the, on the Wildwood Building Committee. We appreciate it in return. Uh, all right, there are a few other folks, but no one looks to be interested in making a public comment. Give it another couple of seconds. Okay. And with that, I think that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. I know, Dr. Brand, you and your team have to get to the select board meeting, so thank you for being here and doing this uh prior to that meeting. Members of the committee, thank you for being here, and we'll see some of you at the select board meeting. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. That's Mr. Golden, seconded by Mr. Exdale. All right, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Good night and thank you, and see you soon.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.